It is just about 6:02 on August 19th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Oneonta, and we call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Drennan?
Here.
Councilmember Moja Campoli?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo? Councilmember McHugh? Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Hello.
Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Forster Rothberg?
Here.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes. If you'd all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. And as has been our wont these last couple of months, we are going to turn the meeting over to our council members for any items that they'd like to bring forward to the community. We are, in fact, recording.
Yep.
We, in fact, do have audio. Okay? And motion number 10 is actually a discussion of already. You may notice. So we will move on to our council members and any discussion items that they may have. Kate?
So I heard from some folks in my neighborhood, the center of town, that there was some interest in having like a lawn sale day, like the East End has and the West End has. So we've scheduled that, just to get one going. It's the Sunday of Labor Day weekend, which I believe is the 31st, and it's in the afternoon. So if you live in the center city or you know someone, please spread the word. The idea is to just get people out and mingling and having fun. And, you know, even if you don't have anything to sell, if you want to like make lemonade or put sidewalk chalk out or something, just to make it a fun day. So that's at 8:31 in the afternoon. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Scott?
Just to make a note of it, I was stopped on my way here today asking if we can get lines painted by Walgreens up Chestnut Street and by West Street due to the funky intersection. I said, sure, we'll pass the long way up so we have a meeting tonight so I can at least get it to record.
Good. Any additional? Yes, Mike?
Just want to say welcome back to the Hartman and Oneonta students who are coming back this week. And just advise everyone that West Street and Church Street will be congested Thursday and Friday during movement. And perhaps more care like this year to be roundabout, so.
I've noticed that SUNY put up very instructive directions, which we had them like two months ago. They're great. Take you up to where you want to go. Anybody else who'd like to bring something forward? All right, with that then, we actually have a public hearing. And that public hearing before the mayor is to receive comments on a proposed ordinance modifying Chapter 5 of the City of Oneonta Municipal Code entitled Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Committee. This ordinance was laid electronically on July 21st, 2025, and approved by the Common Council on August 5, 2025. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this in this hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I will close that hearing. Thank you very much. And now we are going to move on to our petitioner section. And again, I don't recognize every single face here. Many of you I do, but not as regular attendees. So I just want to make clear how this works. We ask you to please raise your hand. If you're interested in speaking, move to the microphone. You'll let us know your name and where you live. Three minutes is an appropriate amount of time to speak. If you start going beyond that much, I might kind of likely tap the gavel so that you know. I don't want to be rude, but we also probably looks like we might have a number of people want to speak. Respect is the name of the game, right? So we're all on the same page. So with that, I'm going to open the petitioner section, and I'll ask anybody who... Yes, Randy?
Hello, everyone. My name is Randy Maritolo. I live at 1170 Kelly Corners Road. And I want to thank all the council members that have taken an interest in our last presentation and an interest in finding the facts to this whole airport deal. You know, it's a long ways from being over. And I really want people to take deep consideration into this whole FAA grant and the implications that that can have, not just on our water supply, because that's, to me, is the greatest and most obvious, but just the generational damage that this is going to create. This is not just, this is not just our families' present day. This is generational. And that's what people need to know. This is a legacy that the city council will leave behind them and the mayor. So this takes real heartfelt consideration. But I do appreciate the interest that the city council members have had in responding to us, coming to our homes. And I still open that invitation to any of you. And the reason we came here tonight, and we will be here for the Airport Commission also, but I wanted to come tonight because I don't know who will be here for the Commission tomorrow, because it's not really required for the city council to be here. And I have this much faith in the Airport Commission. And I'm not sure that, how many other people have any more faith than I do in them? We've been lied to for years now from them. And so that's why, to me, the power lies in the city council, not in the Airport Commission. And so that's why I feel it's important that we come to city council. I'm not going to say a whole lot more tonight, because I want to leave room for other people to speak. But I do want to just tell you about somebody that I have coming to speak with some real world information about not just the Oneonta Airport, but air. Air, whatever you want to call it. So he spent 22 years in executive and consultant, 16 of it in regional airline industry. He was the executive vice president for one of the oldest commuter airlines, Catskill Airways. He served as vice president for marketing at Mohawk Airways. He was a vice president in industry affairs for TWA Express. He was on the boards and councils of Haskin Field Advisory Council in Boston for the LaGuardia Airport Slot Committee, Griffiths Military Affairs Committee in Rome, and the Regional Airline Associations President Council in Washington, DC. So I just feel it's important for you to hear some, from people who have real world experience in this and historical data on some of this. So with that, I'm just going to end. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy. Have we anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hey, Mark.
Hey. How are you? My real world experience is 17, 16 years at the Oneonta Airport.
Will, you need to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Will Lund. I live at 121 Lull Road in Oneonta, and I worked at the Oneonta Airport on and off for 17 years, actually, in the early days. But I'm here specifically to talk about what Randy was mentioning, the airport project, specifically about expanding the runway. I've done a bunch of research. When I read it in the paper, what was going on, I just had to come down here and speak because it seemed insane to me. There's no need to expand the runway at the Oneonta Airport. And I can tell you why. The 10 largest corporate jet operators in the United States, and I didn't get any further than that, can all fly. They all have a fleet of airplanes, and they all have an airplane or two or more in their fleets that can already land at the Oneonta Airport. I think the gentleman who made a presentation a while ago to the county talked about a grandfather who flew in to see his grandson play baseball. Case in point, he was able to fly into the Oneonta Airport. I was once picked up by a 19-passenger airplane from TWA Express when I was a consultant for them, a large 19-passenger airplane with 3,400 feet, 800 feet less than we have now. Not one of those large operators will say no if you call them up, because they have one of 40, there's 41 different models of jet corporate airplanes that can fly and land in Oneonta with 4,200 feet, which is what we have today, or less. So the length of runway is not a factor for economic development. If you, if you want long runways, if you want an example, just call the Nida County Airport. I worked there for four or five years in the 80s. They have two runways, one's 6,000 feet long, one's 5,399 feet long. And ask them what their economic impact is of those two long runways. You don't have to ask them, because you can't, because the economic impact is zero, because they closed that airport in 2007. Those long runways didn't do anything for Nida County. And that's a market, a demographic market area 10 times larger than Oneonta, not Seago County. So runways aren't the answer. Longer runways aren't the answer. And airplanes can land, all aircraft operators can land in aircraft, as jet aircraft in Oneonta today. They're not going to say no. There's no benefit for the county. I don't see any significant economic benefit by lengthening the runway. All I see is a bunch of trees getting knocked down in our beautiful upstate, upper Seago County, middle Seago County getting destroyed. It seems like ludicrous proposal. I've read a lot of grants. I've written a lot of grants. I don't know the gentleman involved. I do know one of their fathers, who's a great guy. Don't know why they are proposing to take all this money from the FAA, just because it's there, because it's going to... All I can see it doing is ruining a bunch of property without any benefit. I mean, no one's going to not fly into Oneonta now. They can already fly here if they want to rent an airplane, a reta jet, corporate, eight, six to eight-passenger jet from any of the major corporations, the 10 biggest ones. So please, don't take the FAA's money. Be heroes. All the resident, I think some, all of us residents of Seago County someday will be really proud of what happens if you don't take the money and waste it in hundreds of thousands of dollars of local tax money and waste it on expanding the runway at the Oneonta Airport. That's not going to, that's going to do nothing significant to our economy. I guess that's all I have to say. I just really hope that you follow your, the sense. There's no logic in it whatsoever. It's not going to increase our economic situation whatsoever. It's not going to bring a lot of, it's not going to bring a lot of people here, a lot of money here. It's going to bring a few grandfathers. Actually, it's not going to bring anybody who can't already come here. That's my point. Anybody who wants to rent a jet aircraft can land in Oneonta, because all the major jet operators have aircraft that can land here. There's 41 different models. There's 23 Cessna Citation models alone. Embraer has models, Bombardier Jet, Learjet has five models. I didn't want to read the list, because I only have three minutes. And I see Mark has his gavel. So I beg you, with a little experience, having worked at the airport and in the airline industry for a long time, this is a bum deal. It's ludicrous. And if you vote for it, I think you'll regret it in the future. And if you don't, if you don't take the money, I think you'll be very proud and make a lot of other people very happy.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else do we have that'd like to speak? Please.
My name is Jim Forbes. I live in the town of Milford, and I'm a New York State licensed professional engineering consultant. I have taken an oath to protect the public safety, health, and welfare of the general public. I'm confident that you, as council members, have the community's best interest in mind also. Your job is difficult at best, and many times there are sleepless nights with hard decisions that affect many people. I hope that you've done your due diligence in researching the issues for the Oneonta Airport expansion and the decisions that you must make concerning our environment, our water supply, and events that may affect many families in the future, all pertaining to a small area on a hilltop four miles away. The expansion of the Oneonta Airport by taking FAA funds is a salesman's pitch to get you to believe this will be the answer to the next local economic golden era. In reality, it is to serve those affluent enough to afford a membership into private jet transportation. This will be done at the taxpayer's expense, also at the expense of our drinking water, and ultimately at the expense of our forests and clean air. The airport is one half mile from the Oneonta Reservoir. Airports are significant sources of pollution. They contribute to both air, surface water, and noise pollution. The most polluting modes of transportation ordered from highest to lowest impact are airplanes, heavy-duty trucks, passenger cars, and then public transportation. Sometimes we actually vote against our own best self-interest, but there is a chance to change our minds and make things right for what best suits our community, our clean water, and protection of our environment. Community, our pristine environment, and our clean water is why people come here in the first place. This is evident by the people relocating to our surrounding area due to their hometown climate issues, wildfires, lack of air quality, and population density. Sometimes information comes to light that we didn't have previously, and we need to amend our opinions or ways of doing things. And that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. Managers do things right. Leaders do the right things. Look at Flint, Michigan. Remember the Love Canal? Perfectly relevant is the recent Jackson, Mississippi, water crisis. I implore the council to continue their diligent research of what this proposal really means to our sustainable way of life here. I think you will realize this expansion proposal is not in any way beneficial to our community.
Thank you very much. Have we anybody else who'd like to speak?
I'm Dr. Sweet. I served our local hospital for 20, 35 years, 20 of those intermittently as chief of surgery. I have lived in Oneonta for over 40 years. I have a lot of concern about this whole project. First of all, clear cutting all of that acreage is going to cause tremendous surface water to run into our water supply and reservoir. Surface water is known for contaminants. All the other contaminants that you guys listed are also going to run right down into our water supply. have we documented any significant increased use of the airport to demand this kind of a expansion? I haven't heard of any, but maybe you guys know more than I do. Third, who is going to be able to afford the maintenance of this increased vast property? Our taxpayers can't afford it. We're losing taxpaying businesses to this all the time. Thirdly, we have lost enrollment in both of our colleges. They're not, they're not expected to be expanding in the near, near future. I'm concerned about the population that's going to use this huge new airport. I don't think it warrants it. The second largest employer of, of... The first largest employer was, was the colleges. And if they're decreasing, what's going on? The second largest employer was our hospital, where I worked for a long time. And it's practically been decimated by our neighbors to the north. I guess I shouldn't say anything like that. Also, UHS was here for about six, seven years, but they've been moved away out of the area. So I really want the members of this organization to seriously sit down and reconsider their votes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sweet. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Oh, now we got a couple of hands. Go ahead. No, no, you have to...
Good evening. Bryson George, Bryson George Road, Oneonta. I've been an airline pilot for about 45 years. Recently retired. I flew for Pan Am. I have a bachelor's degree in aeronautical science from Embry-Riddle. I've been around the area for a long time. I was around when the first, when the airport was built. Had a huge impact on a lot of good families that were there and never really turned out to be very economically viable. And it seems like it would be the same thing happening here again, unless there's a really good reason to do it. I, I've been a chief pilot for a charter outfit flying Citation jets, and I would concur that the runway environment here is adequate for most airplanes, as he said, that would come in here. Just wanted to throw my two cents in to substantiate that. So I would, I would ask you to consider long and hard before you approve the going forward with this expansion.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Mike Lynch. I live at 51 Ford Avenue in Center City, Oneonta. I wanted to add my thanks to many of you who have given your time and energy to dig into this issue about the airport over the last couple of weeks. My council member, Katie LaPerry Shu, was generous enough to give me quite a bit of her time. I know you all are on limited time schedules, and it's hard to figure out. But I want to applaud those that have really worked on this. Any way you look at this project, there are problems. It is blinking bright red. That's clear to me. What I would encourage you is to start to put together a motion for the council to rescind item number 17 from your April 15th council meeting, to pause the project at least so that we can get a better handle on what's going on. So thank you for those who have shown interest, and I think it's time to move forward with the motion to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on any other subject? Do I have somebody? Yes, please.
Not, not on the subject, though.
That's fine. That's, the subject is perfectly fine.
Hi, my name is J.C. Chase. I live at 8 Boylston Street in Oneonta. And I want to thank everyone for all their statements. I think there's a lot of really expert opinions and experience. I come, I think, with more just concern and questions, one of which being, you know, whether or not an environmental impact statement has been released about this project and what we can expect. You know, my concerns are that an increase to an airport would be obviously a big polluter. There's, you know, more carbon dioxide and nitrous oxide and sulfates and things in the air. Our drinking water would be impacted. But I think overall, just, just in general, thinking about something like this, you know, in the long term, and I think the first speaker for talking about the generational impact, because I think that, you know, there are a lot of environmental risks. There's quality of life impacts. And there's, it's, I think, very easy to have like a short-sighted goal of like, hey, there's this thing, and, you know, maybe it's, it's going to make money in a short-term way and get excited about a pitch. I know similarly, this is the second kind of council meeting I've been to in the past few weeks. There's a data center being proposed and being opened in the town of Oneonta that potentially could be a huge polluter and, you know, impact on our town. And I think just looking around, it's, Oneonta really is a special place to be. It's beautiful. It's, it's a really great city. And I fear for, you know, projects that are going to impact all of our quality of life and this beautiful landscape that we have, our drinking water. And really, it comes down to like our mental health, our long-term health risks, you know, potential issues. And even, even in a shorter term, you know, thinking about if, if projects like this are rushed into without, you know, that environmental impact being really studied or if it's not done correctly, you know, the city, maybe you don't care about the environment, but you care about money. The city could be sued. It has been before, you know, for things like that. And, and so it's, I think, just looking at all of the risks and, you know, financially, the financial burden to homeowners and taxpayers, to the, you know, the property values, the way that's going to be impacted. There's so many angles to look at things like this. And so I really thank you all for taking your time to really consider a long-term impact about expanding an airport or, you know, developing new business that may not really be, be a good fit for us. So thank you all for, for what you had to say and for sharing. And I'm going to continue to follow this and learn as much as I can. And, and thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Have we anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes?
I promise I'm going to keep it brief. My name is Laurel Shaw. My address is 413 Mather Road, Oneonta, New York, Town of Laurins. I live across the street, street, if you want, from the airport. I just realized that as I'm listening to everybody, that we got kind of blindsided, that this, whatever you approved of on the 15th of April, we're just finding out about it later. So all of this kind of could have been avoided had we been included a little bit and known what was going on ahead of time. So that just occurred to me. Anyway, I'll keep my comments brief. I'm here to ask the city council to rescind approval of a plan to extend the current runway to, and the airport. The plan involves cutting 100 acres of trees from private property owners on Airport Road and Upper East Street, all in hopes of obtaining an FAA grant. By now, you've heard arguments both for and against this speculative project. Again, I would ask that you put a stop to the plan for extending the runway. What Oneonta needs is a small, safe airport, which we already have. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
I will be going to speak.
Get your glasses.
It may be considered by some people inappropriate. Bill Sanders, B. George Road, Town of Milford. The airport's right over there. The taxpayers of the City of Oneonta support the airport, have since, long before I moved to B. George Road, 22 years ago. It was there when we moved in. We're happy to be neighbors, support the airport, as it's been since Will Lund was there, whom I've known for some years. The taxpayers of the City of Oneonta support that airport. In a day and age, on a national scale, the taxpayers are going to fund a grant to the City of Oneonta Airport, excuse me, to lengthen the runway, cut down the trees, environmental impact statement. The taxpayers want this federal grant or the people behind this project. Let's not forget, we're federal taxpayers. That's our money. This isn't free money. This isn't something manna from heaven. Where is the benefit? And in a day and age, when the federal government has made it clear we can't afford health insurance for the indigent, indigent, we can't afford SNAP for the indigent, we can't afford the basic social safety net of an advanced industrial society, but we want free money for an airport expansion nobody thinks we need, except for the people directly involved? With that, I'll try to keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Folks, do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, and we'll close this petitioner section. And I will remind people that don't need reminding that there'll be an Airport Commission meeting here in this very location at 4:00 PM tomorrow. Okay? Do we have any correspondence?
Just one. From Maureen Daly, 34 Diet Street. Please read this at the Common Council meeting. Dear councilmembers, my apologies, I can't make it to the council meeting today. We have our monthly tenant meeting at Diet Street Lots tonight. I was hoping to bring them good news, that the parking lot issues had been resolved, but the issues are ongoing. The first issue is for more handicap parking spaces to be considered behind the Diet Street Lots building. We currently have four handicap permit holders among our residents. There are only two handicap spaces. The space out front on Diet Street does not serve our residents. Please, please, make at least two more spaces. Between visitors and other disabled people that use the lot, a case could be made for more spaces, but two would be nice. The second issue is the icy conditions in the lot during winter need to be addressed. Please figure out a solution that lets our disabled residents park nearby during cleaning. I'm willing to make suggestions if you need them. By the way, there hasn't been a street sign for Diet Street at the corner of Main Street since I've moved here. Perhaps we could have one of those, too. Thank you to the DPW workers that completed our dedicated walkway for the crosswalk and signage. signage at the corner of Wall Street, and the increase the site distance for the exit driveway. They are much appreciated. Regards, Maureen Daly.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's all of the correspondence.
That's all I got.
All right. So, at one point or another, I know a lot of folks are going to want to pick up and leave. I'm going to ask you to please hang out for Cory, a presentation on the marketing efforts that have been going on, and with that, the 2025 Marketing and Promotion Services update. Cory Rowe and Atsigo Media.
Good evening, everybody. So, we're about halfway through the marketing that's being done by Atsigo Media for the city of Oneonta. We were hired in April, May, based off of an RFP, to conduct marketing for the city of Oneonta, and I'm here to make a report on that media and marketing campaign that we've been doing, and this should be considered our quarterly reporting as per the contract. First and foremost, the RFP wanted us to work on the Explore Oneonta website. That was, front and center of the RFP was to increase engagement, increase SEO, and create a calendar of events that highlighted all the activities that were going on in and around Oneonta. So, we did that right off the bat. We built a calendar, and we've been working tirelessly to make sure that every event that is possible can go on that calendar, and to the point that we added a submission form so that people could send in events, and people have used that submission form as well to send in those events. And so, we went through the entire summer, and I'll present documentation to back this up, but the website was highly used. People not only submitted events, they went there to look at events. I'm pretty sure the Daily Star's looking at it, so they know where to go take pictures, and so it's been beneficial. And I'll pass this around right now, which is the appendix of my report, to show the increase in traffic. This is the top right here. You'll see these little dots. It was before we started, and then this is when we started, and you can see the dramatic increase in that, if you guys want to just take a look at it. So, we've really significantly brought up web traffic on the website, and so the main question to us was like, how do we do that? Besides a calendar of events, what's the number-one thing that's going to drive traffic to this website? And for us at Atsigo Media, like that guy over there, it's videos. We make a lot of videos, and we thought that that was the best way that we could create a campaign that drove people to come to the website, and that is what we did. So, we created a weekly schedule of events that we release on Tuesday. There's a weekly recap that talks about everything that passed, and then everything that's coming up in the following week, and then we release spotlights that highlight the four categories, something, you know, unique, something adventurous, something delicious, something artistic, those kind of main categories that fall already under the city's branding and marketing guidelines. So, we've created numerous videos, as weekly videos, as spotlight videos, as event videos, news videos, and also on that piece of paper that you're seeing is the traction that came from those videos. And so, originally, as we were kind of getting started, you would see about, let me, I have this written down here, we have seen the viewership and interactions from the videos continue to rise, which is also reflected in the website visitor count of the website. Video views when we started the campaign were around 6,000 to 9,000. Video views after two months of the campaign are up to about 20,000. Clicks through numbers on the event calendar are also on the rise. We started to see about 200 to 300 through clicks in the early June, and now we're into 500 and 600 through clicks on those videos. So, it's been very successful to do that. We're also in the process of creating more content for the website, because as Greg and I have been working on is trying to raise the SEO of the website. So, this website's been underutilized for many years, so everybody else who has websites about similar data is prominent in search results because they have, A, more content, they've been around longer, and they update the website more. So, rising in SEO standings is only going to happen over a long period of time where we're able to add more content. So, we released another video today, which is, you know, some of the best burgers in Oneonta. This is something I wanted to work on. It was challenging to get into some of the restaurants. We couldn't get into the depot. They were too busy, which is great. I'm very happy that they were too busy to let us in, and so we were only able to highlight a few, and that's kind of the, you know, the dance that we have to do between businesses who want us to come in and film versus those who don't. And so, we try to highlight local businesses and stuff like that. So, you can see also on the data that I'm just passing around again, that you can see that those website views have gone up significantly. So, that's kind of how we kind of came about it. On top of that, we wanted to create a map, and this was not in the RFP, but it was something that we suggested that we do, and so we created a map, and I'm going to hand these out so you guys can take a look at them. It's a brochure, full color, tri-fold, nine by 16, and the number-one concern creating a map is the turnover of businesses. It happens. We have new ones coming in, we have old ones leaving, and so we didn't want to create an artistic, like, in-depth, like, theme park map that had to be updated by a graphic designer every time a business changed. So, we felt it was best just to highlight areas of the city, specifically downtown, that, and all the businesses that are on there, and we can easily just change those out. Full disclosure, I did run into another map, and I'll pass these around so you guys can take one, keep them for yourself, at Sloane's a few weeks ago, which was a theme park-style map that was created by an out-of-town company. I wanted to present that to you as well this evening, because I don't want to say this is the only solution. It's one of many solutions, and we could potentially go in that other map. So, I will get you that map so you can look at it, and then the city can determine what we want to do. The idea is, once we solidify a map, make changes, you guys give me notes, again, this is a V1. We literally, I just got this in the mail today. So, you know, you give me notes, give me feedback, we can make changes, we can go with the other map, and then we do have some money in the budget that we put forth to print some of these maps. Unfortunately, it took most of the summer to get it created, so we're kind of on the back end of that. So, you know, again, looking forward to next year, it's something that we can definitely have ready for when the tourists come to town. We can put them in hotels, we can have them, you know, hand it out at checkout and stuff like that, and it should be relatively easy to do so. And so, that was the map. Let's see what else we got here. Oh, and the hashtag Explore Oneonta. One of the other things within the RFP was to make and, you know, bring up people's usage of the hashtag Explore Oneonta. So, we created a campaign where every week we give out a $20 gift card to somebody who used the hashtag Explore Oneonta, and it's been successful. It's not something that jumped off the map like the website traffic did right off the bat, but people are incentivized to get these gift cards, and so they're starting to use it. You see it more and more, and the caveat to that is that we only are buying business gift certificates from locally-owned businesses, especially focusing on Main Street and the greater Main Street area, because we want to always make sure that that money goes back to the businesses. And of course, we're never asking for a donation from the businesses, we are buying these gift cards from them, and so on and so forth. At this time, we're about halfway through the campaign. We've spent about half the money, and now we're going to transition into supporting college life and trying to, you know, erase the gap between college life and the city of Oneonta. And so, our calendar of events has already been updated with tons of college-centric events, some that don't really have anything to do with city members, but that's okay because we're trying to, again, erase that gap between the two. And we're, our methodology for this is, we went to the summer events, and now we're going to go to the college events, and we're going to run this out for the rest of the year until they leave in December, and that's kind of the end of our campaign. And so, we have more videos that you'll see, two to three videos a week, unless, of course, something like last week where we were just all booked out of town, and we even were able to get something up quickly from the theater in Utica. And then, as we go through the rest of the year, we're going to continue to promote videos, we'll continue to work on the map, we'll continue to promote Explore Oneonta hashtags, and we're open to any feedback at any time. I have not invoiced the city for any of this, so if you're unhappy with our work that we've done so far, feel free to fire me, and I don't have to pay, I don't have to be paid. So, I just want to make sure that everybody's happy with the work that Atsigo Media is doing, and by and large, people are. I've only seen a couple of negative comments, and it's normally like, why didn't you include this person, or why didn't you go here? And it's like, we couldn't, or we weren't able to. So, overall, that's about where we're at, and it's been a successful campaign. Of course, I know you guys are in budget talks, so I just want to suggest that perhaps talk about the idea of making this a line item in next year's budget so that we can continue the marketing, and it will continue to grow over time. As all media campaigns, the longer you do them, the more effective they are. I'm not asking for more money, I'd just say about the same, I think we'd do just fine.
Cory, would you mind taking some questions from?
Of course, I'm happy to take any questions from anybody that they have.
Any council members? Len?
Cory, are you reminding what the budget line is?
20,000. And I, from my perspective, we've given quite a deal. We, I'm paying the guys hourly for the videos, so our normal rate that we're charging for business videos or things like that, this is like drastically lower than that. We're called at-cost videos, and so we're doing the most we can with a little bit of money, a little bit of amount of money that we got.
Yes, Scott?
If you had an ideal budget, what would it be?
That's a great question. I'd say 50, just right off the top of my head, because then you could start to get into television advertisements, and you could kind of work out from social media, and that's kind of the main fight that we have, is how do you engage people who are not on social media? You can do newspaper ads, which we know are not that effective, but also, you know, expensive, and so just broadening your reach. And also, I think that some of the other money wouldn't only go to Atsigo Media, there's other people like Towny and Paperkite and Cass Harrington, and there's so many other people that we could work with if the budget was a little bit bigger, where we could kind of spread the money around so that there's more effective strategies than just videos and calendars and maps. There, you know, copy, blog posts, you know, and on and on and on. So, I would love to work with more people next year, but again, I'm happy with where we're at, and I think it's a huge benefit, because as I show in the graph that I passed around, even with the minimal effort that we put in thus far has had a dramatic impact compared to the lack of effort that was done previously.
Any further questions?
Yes.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say that I am someone who's like chronically online, and so I've seen, I think, probably all of the content that you've put out, and it's really high-quality, and it's visually very rich, and I think that it represents our community really well. So, yeah, it's interesting to watch, I'm always like looking forward to them. I think just from your data and everything, it sounds like the biggest success or what's getting the most engagement is like the events calendar. People like the idea, and I've heard this from Cass, too, about Atsigo County, but just like the idea of having like one place to go for all the events that are happening so that they can kind of plan and not be piecing it together. It's very convenient, so I appreciate you guys taking that on, and it's nice to hear that that is working. This is very cool. The only, and actually, I really like, so this thing that you're saying about the turning over of businesses, I don't know if you remember this, you're a pretty like observing guy, so you probably have noticed, but on the West Scott lot wall that's no longer there, there was a sign for a very long time that had like outdated businesses and then like faded and crumpled, and I always thought like, ugh, that's such a bummer because it's so, it's so out of date and it's hard to update, so I'm glad that you are not, you know, totally committing to like the exact businesses that are there. I think that makes this very replicable. One thing that I would say, and so I love the idea of like the districts, one thing I was thinking is, even like this sort of feels like a commitment, the inside, and so potentially for just a longer-lasting effect, like maybe put like a few like anchor businesses, like ones that have been there for 50 years or something, and then maybe just, you know, more on the website. You could push people to the website, so that would be...
And the QR code does take you to Explore Oneonta on the front page.
Oh, great, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay, but yeah, so I think, so that would be my only thing, is like potentially less businesses listed on here, although I know that there's, you know, you want to get as many in there as possible. But this is really nice, feels good, the quality of the videos, like I said, are great, and so I think it's just been really good, and I hope that we can continue to keep the events calendar going, because I think that's been really helpful.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
I was expecting a button there. Thank you very much. I want to just touch on your point, and also, it was to Scott's question, the map that was on West Scott wall, which I do know, I've been pushing, and if we're going to expand money in any way, not, you don't even need to expand money for this, a touchscreen, outdoor, live map in the middle of Mueller Plaza, you don't even have to pay for it. As a business owner, I would sponsor it if the city would allow it. You put up on top, you put some branding, and then there's a screen, and you touch it, and it's got interactive features, and you can show businesses, commercials, all kinds of stuff, would be a great add to Main Street and to replace the map that's no longer on the wall.
Yeah, I mean, digital programming is just so much easier to update.
So, yes.
So, that sounds awesome. Yeah, and like malls have that all over the place.
Of course, I mean, we have screens in our, in Doja where we just send a video through a scoop stick and uploads, and immediately it's on there and it plays. It's very easy and very affordable, so it's something that we could do next year. Thank you for your kind words.
Any other council members? Yes, Mike?
Cory, thank you for your work so far. I think this is very for version one, and I look forward to version two.
Indeed.
Wanted to ask you, how are you working with Hartwick and SUNY Oneonta's marketing vacation offices as far as your place for the fall?
As of right now, we're just getting into that, so we just got their calendar, and I'm working with the president's office at SUNY Oneonta to make sure that we understand completely what's going on and that we're a benefit to them. Hartwick, I haven't actually had a conversation with yet, but it's definitely on my radar to complete as the students get back in the next couple of weeks. You know, at this point, the main thing that we're doing is synchronizing their calendar into ours so that the events are there, so that our team is aware of those events, so that we can go to those events, videotape them, promote them, put them in recaps, and then raise awareness for those events, so that if there is an event that's both college-oriented and for the city-oriented, then we can get both of those groups of people there. And that's definitely the core of what we're trying to do over the next couple of months, is find those moments where it's both city and college together doing something that's beneficial, you know, a win-win-win, as we call, and really highlighting those and showing those, and then building off of that momentum into the winter months.
Okay. You haven't connected with Hunt Union and Bill Harkler Road for that calendar?
I'm pretty sure that we have, but...
Separate from the, I mean, has, actually have a better listing than Oneonta State, but it's the student organization as opposed to the administration.
Would you mind sending me an email with that contact information after, later this week? Thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate that.
Scott?
This isn't really a question for Cory, but just kind of us as a council, that as we go into next year, because we've always been behind the ball, because we always end up doing about three months in or four months in voting for it, I think we should have a decision sooner than later, if we're going to continue this program or not.
That's, I think that's where the...
It would definitely make our job easier. As we picked this up in May, it was kind of like, okay, we just got to run with something, just create some ideas and just go, and, you know, of course, with more runway and more lead time, we can do better.
All right. Len?
So, Cory, is there any opportunity to partner with the county marketing?
Of course.
At any level, and have you reached out to them to see?
I have not reached out to them. At this point, we're kind of in a reactionary phase where we're waiting for things to come to us because we're so busy trying to get through the summer, take care of our business responsibilities while also taking care of the marketing. Again, to Scott's point, those are the kind of things that we can really build into going into year two. I don't have direct communication with the county marketing. Are you talking about Cass?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about a separate organization within the county board that was on marketing. Yes, me and Cass talk all the time, she's on my softball team, and so we're always working at different things that we can do to meet up and to promote events. For instance, the Paddle the 607 event that they had, we were up there and we filmed that event for them, and were able to deliver video assets the same day that they were able to give to Spectrum News, so that they were able to do a news piece, therefore promoting the Paddle the 607 event that happened. So, yes, we are working with Cass as much as we can, but again, our, we're limited means for, to go to Cooperstown often or do most county things, and the RFP that we were hired to work on was specifically targeting Oneonta.
Agreed. I guess you guys should finish my question. Sorry for the background noise.
They're very excited.
They forgot that there was a meeting in there.
Yes.
They were asking to go downstairs and not talk to the hall.
Don't get out. Just close the door.
So, I guess what I was getting at is, maybe it's on our end to try to partner with the county funding in this endeavor, because it's a win-win for the county also.
I think that's a fantastic idea, and I mean, the number-one thing that Atsigo Media is doing right now is retaining some of the college graduates. I have four college graduates who are working for me at this time, as well as internship programs that they want to do, as well as classes that they want to do with Atsigo Media, all over the place. So, between the college and the county, and financing from the county would help. I know that they get some cannabis tax revenue that's floating around out there, so, you know, there's a lot of different ways to skin that cat.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Len.
Any other council members? Cory, before I let you go, I'll just tell you, huge fan of the work that you continue to do, the work that you're doing before you even started this, so very excited to have Atsigo Media as a leader among our business community, and the work you're doing is pretty stellar. If you would, could you share with Kerry at one point or another, the, has he read?
No, he always does, though.
All right, if you would, so that you can then distribute that, the graphs and so forth.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll send her an email. Absolutely.
So, Cory, again, my thanks, I think the city's thanks. I know that you're not making money on this.
Not, not really, no.
But it's a labor of love, and I know that it is, so thank you very much.
We like to be beneficial to the city. That is the number-one thing. We want to be needed and used, so thank you very much for hiring us to do this. Thank you all very much. You have a lovely evening. Good luck with the rest of your meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dylan.
See you tomorrow.
All right, we're going to give you folks, it looks like, a moment. And Dylan, I've got your...
Yes, you do.
Okay. Right there. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to boards and commissions and task force. Is there any liaison here that has anything that they want to bring forward relative to the goings on in their various boards or commissions?
Oh, actually, no, I was just listening.
Go ahead.
So Parks and Rec met, and we had recently had some correspondence about, about making the Maple Street Park the new home of Dick Miller Park, and there was some, they want to continue to talk about like the feasibility of that, but there was general support for that, and I'm a Parks and Rec commissioner, so I figured I'd just share that.
Yeah, that's good to hear, actually. Yes, go ahead.
So also, the Housing Commission, our newest member did show up. We were able to have a meeting, but there's still two seats.
Working on it. It's hard, working on it.
Yeah, and so the commission is really working hard on moving that project forward with the West Broadway lot, but it would be great if we could get, because it was touch and go, like every meeting is touch and go on whether we have a forum.
If there's anybody out here who would like to join the Housing Commission, please come see me if you're a city resident. That's the key. But trust me, it is on my agenda every single day, and phone calls are being made every single day. Okay? We'll get you filled up. Okay? All right, so if there's nothing else relative to boards and commissions, et cetera, then we're going to move on to committee reports, and we'll start with the legislative committee, and we can probably open those doors back up again for the sake of... So Len?
Mayor. In that last, thank you, August 11th. And the first one was having the Board of Public Service at our meeting. This is something that's been coming that Scott helped set up, and so we listened from primarily Chairman Merzeg, who may or may not have been, or supposed to have been there.
Go there.
I did see another Merzeg in the hall during our meeting, so I was thankful that there wasn't any discussion. Anyways, with that said, we heard from their perspective of what it's like to be on the Public Service Commission, deal with property owners having administrative fees, and as they clearly communicated to us that two years ago, the administrative fees were increased by 40 percent, and administrative fee totality has grown substantially since then. So we're still, as a committee, we're looking at that and trying to get more background information on what does it take. I think trying to open those lines of communication with the property owners that have rental property is something that we need to do. I think maybe one of the spots that we need to concentrate on is software application. I don't know if our new IT department has the ability to find us software that can take the listing of rental property owners and put that in so that reminders can get out there, because as we all know, we use our electronic devices to remind ourselves. So for me particularly, I usually have the day before and then an hour before and then 30 minutes before the meeting to remind me that I have a meeting. So that's me. I have a lot of meetings. I'm sure everybody here has a lot of meetings, but I think that's what maybe is missing from my perspective of that open communication. The Codes Department does an outstanding job in the fact that the technology that they're using today to get the message out, but I'm just wondering if maybe there's an opportunity with the digital service that we can get out there a little bit more and just remind people.
I would just agree. Like they're doing it manually right now, which is really onerous, and so, yeah, they're absolutely doing the best they can, but that's something that I would support as well. If it's not on the calendar, it's not going to happen.
And then Stephen early went over the exterior maintenance, so he had drafted what that could look like for us, and he primarily honed in on the administrative aspects of that, and so that's something that the committee will look at for the rest of the month and then moving into the next month will... I don't know how this is going to actually shake out now for next month, but we'll get back to you on that. And then Katie is...
Can I just add something to that? Because one of the ideas, I think, behind the administrative fee thing is that it gave specific criteria for consideration of reduction or dismissal of the administrative fees by the Board of Public Service, which does not currently exist. That was a big theme for me. Thank you.
And then council member Lapari Shu is bringing rent stabilization information. She's forwarded that to us now, and so the committee as a whole will be looking at that, and then we'll start talking about that.
Okay, thank you very much, Len. Move on to finance and human resources. And Scott, you shared that meeting.
Yes, yeah, we met on Thursday the 14th, a little after five o'clock. I was actually a little bit tardy getting here. It's been a hell of a work. So we have three appointments coming in front of us, one for the Environmental Board, one for the Planning Commission, and one for the Public Arts Commission. I won't steal the mayor's thunder, you can say their names and welcome on board like you normally does, and more so because I mispronounced all three of them at the meeting. We have a, we talked about a real estate easement for a vault that we need for water, for a future project, and that's in front of us, that's in the consent agenda on number five, which will go to the city attorney for his review. The landowner has worked really good with our director, DPW, Chris, and, you know, they were all excited, both of them worked together, so that was nice to hear. We also talked about Stuart, the Stuart Wilcox barn materials, that's a capital project. They're actually, and Swayman's is going to be donating some of the barn. They're going to take the barn down and put the stuff aside. Our DPW crew's going to go pick it up, they're going to bring it down, and that's going to start the bigger project to put it back together, which we've been talking about for a while, for a while. And then we had the, went over a little bit with our Market Street transportation improvements, and I have to apologize when Greg's not here because we talked about a lot with the Market Street. Someone was talking about our HVAC systems, and so Jenny, I'm going to look at you because it was lighting was the other part to get the lights to rock. Boy, I can't talk today. Across Water Street, which was a little bit of increase, but the overall project is still under budget. If that makes sense. We're increasing a little bit, but we're still under budget within, like, you know, which was good to go here. We also have an unexpected shoring of the tunnel roof at our water treatment plant as we're starting to go down, so we're starting to go down through for the project of the wastewater treatment plant. You notice that some of the shoring has started to deteriorate, so this is a small, this is, I say a small fix, it's like, I think, a $75,000 fix to get us to the point where we can get the grants and get some other stuff going to the bigger fix within the tunnel system, as we all know, well, hopefully we all know now. Our tunnel system at the wastewater treatment plant is almost, our infrastructure there is almost all underground except for the big tanks up top. So, which is nice that it's all protected from the elements and stuff like that, but then you got the weight of everything and stuff coming down. And we want to provide a safe workplace for our people. And then we talked about the Cotella well. We had it tested, we're trying to get more to give to this Susquehanna Basin something, Commission, Route Basin Commission. There we go. This is off the top of my head. So we can try to get more, increase our flow rates up in gallons per minute up to our water treatment plant, which will help us out, and I, what was the total, Chris? It's been another extra hundred sixty.
We're not permitted for 400 gallons per minute. We're looking to go to 470 gallons per minute roughly. So a significant increase, about a hundred thousand gallon a day increase, so.
Which will help us, as we know, we last summer, Dave and I had the good job of sitting there writing up with Kerry of getting ready to prepare for a drought emergency, which I think we didn't have to go to that, but this will help ease that kind of stuff. And then we got two things on for discussion. One is going to be the council chambers audiovisual layout improvements. I asked for that to come up here so you can kind of hear what they're talking about and some of the stuff we want to do there. And the other thing was, we had a, that's on the discussion, is for a notice of termination of benefits for surviving dependents of retirees. That's actually a two-part. The committee signed off on the part for the city administrator to work with Dave, our HR, I'm going to just call him director, our HR director, to draft up a policy and stuff because we had a lapse of retirees' benefits that had passed away to the dependent. And when we get to the, get to discussion, we'll discuss that more because that's the second part, is there's a monetary part of that that we're going to discuss.
And I just want to give you a heads up. We've decided we're going to move that to executive session because we're likely to be speaking about a specific individual, just so that you're...
I wasn't going any further, but I was just saying.
Very good.
And that was pretty much the meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Nice job off the top of your head. Any questions for Scott? Okay, well, thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate it. And we'll move to our motions with number one, motion of approval of warrants, that the common council approves the warrants totaling $1,715,760.31, and the same be placed on the finance director's desk for payment as presented. Do I have a motion approved? I say don, and I say only. And we can take the vote.
Councilmember Moser Kempel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Forrester-Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes. All right, great. All right, the consent agenda, the first question I'll ask is, is there anything that needed to be removed that... We're all good? That's a thumbs up? We're all good? And Mike?
I don't think it's worth removing. I would have stayed on two and three since I wasn't at those meetings, but I, that's just a procedural question. I don't think it...
You don't have to. All right. So with that, and before I even move to the motion, I just do want to recognize three volunteers, three more volunteers, so we can get two more for the Housing Commission, please. One of them, Hannah Gillian for the Environmental Board. Hello, this is for you. Hannah is a Hartwick College student, another Hartwick College student, and very glad to continue to have our colleges investing in city government as they are, Mark Palmer and Kate Bashaw, so thank you to all of those folks for volunteering their time. That's how the city continues to run, so thank you much to all those folks. Now with that, if I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and it's Scott followed by Elaine, and if we can please...
Councilmember Moser Kempel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester-Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes. All right. And now, in lieu of the city administrator, we have the deputy, let's call you city administrator, what, do you have anything to present to council? It's our favorite kind of report. Is there anybody here with a question for Dave? Be kind.
I have a question. I think it's something that I might know the answer to. So the Route 23 and 28 Improvement Project, is that my calling it the right thing? That is highway?
Yes.
Project. Do you know where we are on that, when it might start?
Starting, maybe, we're still negotiating with the O.T. I don't have a start date.
Okay, that's a great answer. Thank you. All right.
And Mike?
It may be too soon to have any information on this, but do we know any information about Code Enforcement Office and what will be happening?
It's, at this time, it's too soon.
Okay.
Len?
I'm going to direct this to Chris. How close are we getting to our water level?
We are, as of this morning, 27 inches below spillway.
It is supposed to rain the next couple of days.
They were supposed to give 1.0 inches tomorrow. Hopefully not in 15 minutes.
Be bad.
Getting 1.75 in 15 minutes was a good...
Yeah, and you really see it when you're up at the reservoir, which I tend to be quite a bit. Go ahead, Scott.
I got the most important question of all for Dave. Do you have your office set up yet at the transit?
No. Still just, they're still painting, finishing. Okay. Anything else for David?
That wasn't very bad, right?
All right. So nicely done. Thank you very much. And mayor's remarks, even more nicely done. We're going to dispense with those. We'll move on to discussion agenda item number 10. All right, and that is a discussion of council chambers audiovisual and layout improvements. And I presume I'm going to, who am I turning this over to? Am I turning it over to you, Kerry?
It can be me.
I would imagine it is you.
So we provided some information to the Finance and Human Resources Committee last Thursday about the concept of a system that we've identified that due to its purchasing price would require an official procurement policy. But this system has centralized control for audio-video meeting functions. In front of you would be a 10-inch display, low mount, low profile, sitting there that would allow me to project the current agenda, meeting items, things that you're currently discussing directly in front of you. It can also be unlocked that you can insert your own HDMI if there's something else that you need to view to match up with that. Each individual user would have a microphone that would allow for not only projection out, but some modified amplification to internal meeting attendees. You would have your own camera, which would make it a lot easier for the public to identify who is speaking. I know, I'm sorry. I share your...
And it's like an up situation?
Yeah, we got you. We'll figure it out. But it integrates with our existing livestream functionality, so we would be able to keep up with YouTube, and they will work with us to do that. The touchscreen units will allow whoever is in charge of the meeting and managing the meeting to view the agenda, control the microphones, so we can institute a push-to-talk queue so that if four people want to talk at once, the chair can go right down the line and activate the microphone for whomever is next. Voting would be able to be done from your tablet or from your module in front of you, so everybody would vote at the same time, and we would still be able to display on the screens and to the public who voted in what fashion. It would operate an electronic nameplate in front of the person that is attending the meeting, so keeping this in mind that not just the council using this room, this room is also used by all of our other boards and commissions with little exception. So each meeting attendee would be assigned essentially a proxy card that they would slide into the device, and it would automatically pop up with the controls that they are allowed to function. It would automatically display their name and the role that they serve on their respective border commission. It also helps, like, for example, Finance and Human Resources will occasionally congregate on one side of the room. We would not have to, it sounds horrible, but we wouldn't have to take that extra time to reset up the room and move things around. It would eliminate, and almost virtually eliminate, the need for a paper packet because everything would be displayed in front of you. There's a lot, sorry, I'm geeking out a little bit. I love this.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So I saw that there was some accessibility functionality?
There is.
And so I know that we have that now for attendees, so my mind sort of immediately went to that, but for, you know, people who sit on boards as well?
Meeting participants as well. So it would have that same, so we installed during one of our attempts to work on our sound, we had also installed four three-and-a-half millimeter aux cable ports in the front row. This would place a three-and-a-half millimeter at the desk so that you would be able to plug in a set of headphones to be able to hear if that personal amplified sound wasn't enough.
Cool.
So, and we would have two systems that would come with that to allow, so right now, we have the personal amplification device that you've seen constituents use. We would have a similar concept that they would be able to use, and it would tie directly into the system.
Kerry, can I, I'm sorry? Like a screen reader too, for a visual?
I can find out, absolutely. It wasn't something that they noted, but I can certainly find out.[1752.12]
All right, thank you.
Elaine?
Nope.
No, right.
I was curious if it would increase our ability to do any live stream, I know that that's a comment that I get quite often is that folks would like to be able to watch the meetings as we're live.
They're happening, and, I mean, just to, I, full disclosure, did not one-hundred percent read the the item presented in a recent article, but the live stream, when we do that, it shuts the microphones off. And we had used it at two prior meetings, it had worked appropriately, we decided to try it live for a council meeting and it failed. So, as soon as we identified the problem, we rebooted the system and that's why only the recording has it. And now that we've identified that the live streaming is the issue with our current setup, we are strictly recording and then uploading so that everybody can hear everything. But this system would have newly installed cabling, microphones, everything from the ground up. So, it'll mitigate that. And then, the company that we're currently speaking with, which is not one that we're naming because we know we have to go to bid and we have to find the most appropriate vendor, has indicated, they come onsite to ensure that everything is working as it should before they even release it to us, so.
Carrie, before I go to you, if you don't mind, Mike.
Yeah.
So, one of the concerns that I've had for a while, as we've talked about, is boards and commissions where in certain cases, they don't even have note takers, right? And they do their best to be able to generate minutes that eventually find their way, you know, online. So, how will this, the big issue has been trying to keep your schedule not absolutely crazy, right? So, you can't be at everything. So, and that's one of the reasons that we haven't had the, you know, the recordings and the live streaming of our boards and commissions. How would this impact them?
So, the system, even if we're working on a one-button solution, even if a one-button solution is not available for them to livestream, it will at least allow them to one-button record it. They will be able to manage the meeting and record it, and then later that evening or even the next morning, I can come in, pull the recording, and put it right online.
Can I ask one more question before I go to Mike? Is there an AI kind of functionality where it will kind of synopsize the meeting?
They are working on that, it's currently in development, it is something that they are researching. But they're kind of a beta mode with that particular functionality.
All right, Mike?
Can I answer one of my questions? The second one is thinking about public information access. Would what's shown, information shown be available to be broadcast, to be on the screens?
It could be on the screens, it could be broadcast to the public, we would still probably use our OBS software, which is what does that for us. But yeah, anything that I can put on my laptop, I can put on the screen.
I'm just thinking, like, I, I, I just could have thinking more about how to best to do it, but where do people often, in the meetings, they may have, you know, a paper copy of the agenda, but they don't have any of the additional information, and if it would be possible to... I mean, obviously, you can only put one thing up on the screen at a time, so thirty different people can't read.
People can always, and they can always, the information that is to be discussed and distributed at the meeting is available twenty-four hours prior. So, anybody can contact our office and if they feel they need a paper copy versus the virtual copy, we will print it and we will provide it, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to streamline that so that, I mean, the, just easier it is for people to access the information, the better.
Yes.
But I'm not sure if this system, help in that regard, we're.
It will do, it's similar to the meeting management software that we were looking into with Tyler. So, the information would be available as it is now, as it's uploaded and as the agenda is approved. It would become immediately available on a website that's similar to now the end user can visit and access.
All right, Scott?
The other part of this was, we're done with the computer part of this, right?
I am, but it's not my meeting.
I had a question about, I mentioned this at the meeting we had. What is the cost, and you had mentioned something like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or perhaps a little more?
That is the one-time ballpark cost.
With another five thousand or so.
That's including the five thousand software support package. That five thousand dollars would be the only item moving forward. Once we purchase the equipment, it is ours, we don't have to pay for any leasing or anything of, any use fees or anything of that nature. Software is purchased once, it's ours, they provide the updates. They do offer various support packages. The most expensive one is one that they recommend for the first year, and that is five thousand dollars. But if you look at, at least this particular vendor's website, mostly what that does is move you to, like a pre-check. It moves you to the front of the line as opposed to waiting in line for the rest of the tickets to be resolved.
So, is there a less expensive version that we could consider?
Expensive version of which? The software or the support?
No, the, you know, this was originally discussed to improve audio and video for online, but this has many other features. What about just doing the audio and video part? Is there a package that would cover that?
I'm sure we could definitely look into that.
So, I think when the council considers the whole thing, we should be able to have a couple of different packages to consider.
Yeah, I can do that. The meeting software package, that does the meeting software, the voting, the queue, all of that is for this particular vendor in the ten thousand dollar range. But that ten thousand dollars, if we didn't spend it here, is currently included in our contract with Tyler. So, that ten thousand dollars would be realized in either solution, it's just where we pay it and how it integrates with the system.
The other concern that I mentioned at our meeting was, this is hard to describe. I think the important, the most important thing that we do here is we talk to each other. And to me, it seems that having a screen in front of us might distract from the interaction that we have as council members. I could be wrong about this, but I'm not, but I, it's a concern that I had and I've expressed before. Our eyes naturally go towards a screen, but if there's no screen, it goes towards a face. That's why faces dominate movies and television screens and all of that. So, I'm not so sure that I like the idea of having a screen in front of us. I think it might so, to some extent, actually dehumanize the council. It's something to consider, and that's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Scott?
Well, Lynn had a question about the software.
Yeah, Lynn.
Yeah, so, last question for me was, or the only question for me is, how would it work for council members that need to zoom in?
They integrate with a number of teleconference solutions, so we would not lose that functionality. We would still use Zoom to broadcast, to provide that input.
So, they would still need to use their laptop and cameras, so then their face is put on the overall system?
Yes.
That's capabilities there?
They have, they would use the existing, so if you were to attend remotely, it would be the same way you attended remotely during COVID.
Right.
I'm missing something, I think.
Yeah, so like, we're all looking, as Dan's saying, we're looking at each other's faces in front of us. So, are we using, if I'm the one doing the Zoom, I've gotta use my laptop because I have the camera?
Yes.
So, is that image sent? The software has the ability to take that and move it forward?
And move it forward.
Okay, Scott?
Thank you.
So, the other part of this was talking about the layout of the council chambers in general. And that was, all this stuff you see behind you would be hidden behind a wall. If you go on a plug-in system, you wouldn't see this anymore.
We'd pull out the wall a little bit.
Yeah, you'd have a little bit of a false wall. Yeah, you'd have a kind of a false wall between things. Also, we talked about kind of removing where Elaine and Don sit and actually having the city administrator and clerk come off. We could dance down, that disappears, that opens it up so we can have the public talk. And it's easier for them to get to the podium, somebody wants to walk in and out, brings us closer together, which, you know. It was also just to do some upgrades, like get rid of the carpet, change the flooring out that hasn't been done. Some, you know, we discussed kind of like the paneling, the lights, to upgrade those. And a couple of other things, and then, the theory was, the third is, I think it's doable, but it'll take a little bit longer as we could do that in-house and keep costs down. And so, put a comprehensive package together of how much for the software and how much to do that. We also talked about putting cushions on the seats out there, so it's a little more comfortable for them sitting out there for a while, so.
And so, we staged the council meetings in the Brenner Building, is that?
Yes.
Yes, we go, we moved to Brenner Building for the short time to get this set up because the theory is, let's do it all in one shot, have it done, so we roll everything out. We're not all of a sudden rolling out the software, doing this, and then, oh, well, now we're gonna take it away because we're gonna go down to Brenner Building and then redo the chambers, so.
Yes, Lynn.
So, we're talking two, three months?
Yeah, it'll be a couple of months, yeah, two, two to three months. If we do it in-house, obviously, if you farm it out, it'll be quicker, but then you're also gonna be spending a lot more money.
Sure.
So, and, you know, the budget was actually pretty low, I think Ray gave us, I think it was like one sixty-ish.
All-inclusive. All-inclusive, software and updates.
Yep.
Oh, wow.
Sorry, not to interrupt.
Let me go to Katie.
Well, the only thing I was gonna say, because you brought up the benches, was I noticed that when we have like a really packed meeting, if somebody in the middle wants to talk, you gotta do like the, excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir. And so, it might be good if they were, and, I don't know, maybe this would be a hand bump, but like, individual chairs or something that would allow for, like, just, like, more accessibility in terms of seating, but then also access to get out for public comment and stuff like that, so.
They also, well, we also talked about making that like a theater seat where it bounces up, so you have the first row, and the second row, and the third row, so you're not staring the person's head behind you.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
And that'll give you a little bit more space so when you get up to walk, you wouldn't, you know, be like as close as we are right now.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll see, I'm sure, floor plans, diagrams, all kinds of schematics before we get to the place where.
Maps and different ideas and.
I just asked for this to kind of come up to discussion, to get everybody's input, so we'll put it together. Because our staff has been meeting about it, and then we kind of had our little ideas. And I look at it this way, when we talk about computing, you know, right now, we're bringing our, you don't see it tonight, but most of us, we start bringing our laptops, we open up in front of us, we're trying to get through, and then we're getting irritated because we can't get on the web, and that's starting to set up, where this is already there. But I started laughing again tonight because the first thing out of the mouth when we started talking about this is they said this is gonna be a smart seat. Ginny, I had to look over at you again tonight because I started laughing, but that's really what, what it's, you think about, that's really what it is. It's a, it's a smart console and it helps.
Smart in quotes.
Yeah.
Katie?
So, I see your point, Don, and I think that is a good one. One thing that I like about this is that... Well, I'm just thinking like, okay, so one thing that I don't like about it, sorry, let me start there. Just right off the bat, kind of made me bristle a little bit, is the voting, like, silently, and the reason is, well, there's, there's a lot to voting, right? There's, you think about not just how you feel about it, but also how, I mean, not just how you and your constituents ideally feel about it, but also how it impacts the room. I think that we've caught on to the idea that it's maybe not ideal for us to always vote in the same order every single time. But I do like verbal voting, I like knowing how other people vote when I make my vote, or at least knowing how I think they're gonna vote. So, I think that one of the things that I like about this is that we could come in and sit down in any order. And that could be, so we may still be able to, you know, discuss and then vote verbally, which I think is nice, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be in like this prescribed order every time, which I think would be beneficial. So, that was my two cents on it. I don't know that I would wanna like yes or no. But whatever, if we do it, then that's fine too.
I just, and I just wanna clarify, and I think it was just wording, but I'm that kind of person, nothing about it is silent. It's only silent in that it'll say, okay, this is the motion, we have a first, we have a second, everybody's had their discussion, then it's time to vote, then you push your button, and the display automatically shows who voted in what fashion. So, it's still out there, it's just not verbally calling each individual council member.
Yes.
So.
Yes, and I, I got that, but I don't think that I expressed it well. But I think that, yeah, just all sort of voting at the same time, like quietly and to ourselves, I don't like as much as...
A roll call.
Like you said, like, we're in the room, we're, you know, we're making our decision together as a group, and so, it just feels a little bit more siloed to do it that way. But, you know, I'm not totally opposed to it, but it's sort of my initial reaction, is that I would still like to verbalize my vote.
And that's fair, I just, the word silent, I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm glad you clarified.
Thank you.
And for all of us, just in case anybody didn't get that, but I totally, I, you did emphasize that there's like total transparency would show up, you know, green and red or whatever, yeah, totally.
Okay, done.
Carrie, we wouldn't have to use everything that is involved, we could still have a roll call.
You could absolutely, we could choose not to enable that function.
So, we could consider the various functions.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not against the automatic voting part, but if others don't like it, I, I get that point too. I kind of like roll calls, isn't there a publication called a roll call?
Roll call.
Mike?
Along this topic, I think just we, as we think about changes, being mindful that the council process drives the way we do things as opposed to letting the technology drive how we do things.
That's very stupid.
And also, I guess I didn't understand the room setup, you're talking, for the seats, you're talking about, we just remove?
Like, removing two people, we wind up having eight plus one, so we're just losing the end of the day.
So, we have physically like.
With the same physics, is the plan to replace these or not to replace these?
No.
Because the only time I see is, I know when I'm sitting in a line of people, it's hard to see.
No, it'll be the same, like this, it's not gonna be like a straight line, like.
Right.
Like, this high-spread stuff, it's, it's actually still gonna be like this, it's just, we're pulling everybody closer together. Have our city staff off to the side, have the, have the elected officials up here. You know, they're, they're gonna be like right behind us anyway, and they're gonna have microphones, and it's like if you got questions for Gray or whatever, or Carrie or whatever.
And even as we move this maybe six inches out and pull everything up, maybe six or eight inches, so there's a little bit more room for folks like us in the back, me in the back to try to squeeze in. There'll still be more room now for the, for the attendees to be able to navigate this space, which I think is, you know, something where is at a premium right now, to try to, you know, get yourself up to the podium. The podium could actually be in a more appropriate place as well, so, it opens up some options for us. Further on this? Yes, Lynn?
And so, then, the camera system will also, because we're having a camera looking at the council members, so now we're gonna have a camera focusing on the podium?
We could always install another one, but that wasn't part of our plan. But that is an option if the council is interested.
Right, I was saying.
Yeah, this, this camera would remain.
Right.
To get, and, not to sound like, like, to get an overview shot. But the cameras that this particular vendor has work similar to the Ella system. So, if you're, if I'm speaking, the camera is, you know, it's looking at me. If you start speaking, it will split the screen and then we'll both be on the screen, and it adds, you know, kind of like a Brady Bunch type of deal as you're talking.
I think it would be good to have a camera towards the folks that are speaking.
And we could do that for relatively local.
Moralized also, I mean, this is about transparency to the, to the community, so.
So, you could technically have a camera.
We could throw one up there.
Basically, over there.
Yeah.
To be focused on. Along those lines, would the staff seats have these cameras?
They would have microphones.
But not cameras?
Not cameras.
Okay, that's something to think about because I know when I'm watch, when I've watched livestream, like, people sitting back there where like Ginny and Chris, where you are, you can't see them or hear them that well, and so we think about how we can solve that too.
So, we'd be putting microphones on the side benches, but if we're going to, I mean, a camera to do a wide angle, you're looking at a couple hundred dollars. If we put one on that end to view the podium, that would also pick up that wall. We could also put one there to get the other wall and just manipulate them as we need them to be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, Ellen. Any, any further discussion, Lynn?
Yeah, so, there's been no thought process of moving that wall out and having doors on the sides so that the gallery is actually a little bit bigger? Or is it your idea? We're talking about space, why aren't we not opening this up and having the doorways on the sides?
Do you remember, there was a reason, Chris?
We have to do a structural evaluation of that wall, I think it's a bearing wall, if it is, we're not gonna remove it. We also talked about blowing through this wall, and going that way to make a bigger chamber, but I then got reminded that Chris and his crew would be very mad at me because we'd be taking their offices away, so I don't want them mad at me. But, and actually, when you really do that though, it's, it may not necessarily be that you need a bigger chamber because you don't always have, it's a couple of times a year that we have that topic where, you know, we're loading. You know, but for the most part, we're kind of, you know.
It would be worth, I'm going, I'm sorry.
So, to go back to that, Chris? So, to go back to that, Chris, so, but honestly, I'm not saying clear span it, but we could partially, right?
I think we have to hire an engineer to give us an opinion.
That's basically where I was going.
You want?
Same, same, same thing. Further discussion on this topic, good for the Daily Start to know that we're doing this. We read your columns, we read your editorials. Is there, if there's nothing else on this, and there's not, then I'm gonna ask council again, now having had the meeting take place and the various petitioners and so forth and so on, if there's anything that anybody wants to bring forward for council consideration. Yes, Don?
Um, I wanted to mention while Chris is here, that the crew is doing a very good job on East Street, and it's, the milling is going on, and it's very neat and clean, there's not a lot of dust, it's not affecting the neighbors' lawns and all of that. I went by there today, and I was very impressed with it.
Thank you.
Two thumbs up.
Just so everyone knows, pavement was supposed to start tomorrow, because of the weather, it's likely not gonna start until Thursday, so binder will be Thursday, and then top will be done on Monday.
Great, thank you. Uh, Lynn, sorry.
So the roundabout, I saw traffic block top down today, how's that schedule looking?
You're actually ahead of schedules, I understand.
I was pleased to see the blacktop today.
Kind of different phone call than we got from the guys.
Mike?
In light of the public comments about the airport, I wonder if we want to ask the environmental board to discuss at some point, and I don't know when, airport issues.
I like that idea.
Go ahead, Katie, yes.
I, so, yeah, a, a, as Mike Lynch, who was a council member not immediately before me, two members before me, mentioned, we met. Um, and I think that that's a nice idea, um, in terms of the environmental board, also I'm looking forward to the airport commission meeting tomorrow. Um, and to be there, I'm sure I'll see many of you there. Um, I think that maybe even like a joint, I know it'd be big, and we probably won't all fit in here, meeting of the, all of those involved, like, so that it's not like siloed conversations that are then getting passed, just to talk about the impact of the project, maybe even just representatives from each of the individual boards getting together. Yeah, I have some thoughts about it, and I don't know if folks wanna discuss it now, while we're all together, ahead of that meeting. Um, I would be willing to do that, but I don't wanna decide that for us, but if anybody, you know, wants to talk a little bit about what we've been hearing, what we've been learning, and how we're, how we feel like going on that, um, I would be interested in that. But yeah, I think that's a good idea in terms of understanding the environmental aspects, although, like, I thought that J C had a good point, right, about the environmental impact study. Um, and, yeah, I don't know where we are, I guess, in the process, to expect those conversations to take place, and what, um, what effect they would have on where we stand, so.
So, if I may, so, um, so Mike, that, that suggestion is well taken. I would, I ask, as I've been asking, that we, we do attend or view, depending on what your availability is, the, um, the, the airport commission meeting tomorrow, uh, so that the commission has the opportunity to present the facts as they understand them, um, which may or may not be absolutely in sync with the facts as, as, as other folks understand, but with those facts, we'd be able to have a more informed conversation, and nothing's gonna happen in the next week. So, there's, there's time then to bring back to council discussion what we, what we've heard, what our, what our take is on that, and then, you know, arguably, you know, what actions, if any, the council would wanna take. So I, I would just ask that we take a beat with it and just, you know, let's, let's listen as you're able to attend or watch the airport commission meeting tomorrow. Yes, Lynn?
I'd also like to add that Pissaro is our engineering firm, this is what they do every day. And that tomorrow, the representative is Matt Neeson, who is also local, and he will give all of the facts as he stands to know. And so, I would just ask that we are allowed to go through the process tomorrow. I don't discount anything that was said tonight, but I think we need to hear from the engineering firm that was hired by the City of Oniana County Council that is being paid to do the work, um, from their perspective of what the project entails and where is it headed.
Mike?
I just, I, I do think, as is often the case, people have legitimate concerns, but they also don't have full information. And so I, I've, I assume some of you have as well, received communications from people with inaccurate information that are misunderstandings. But maybe based on what you both just said, we should think about that the next Q L I C, Q L S A meeting might be an appropriate place.
Or potentially even, might even potentially the council meeting, because I, I expect that eight council members will have either attended or, or viewed the meeting and, and will have a level of, of, you know, factual information that will, um, you know, inform a conversation that I think will be more valuable. That one didn't probably is more of a council conversation. Does that sound right there, Mike?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, good. Are you disagreeing, Scott, or just you want to?
Well, I agree, but I also have a thought.
Okay, no, please.
May not be a popular thought, but it's a thought.
That's fine, Scott.
My, I, I'm, I'm all about going through a process, I'm all about finding out facts. My only request, and I've already said this in email, my only request is let's dial down how we talk, let's think about how we talk, let's watch our phrasing, and let's, you know, so that you can get the facts and get the information out. That's, that's my only request.
I think we concur.
Sorry, just along with that, um, I, just for the record, found Scott's email on this topic to be completely respectful and reasonable in the request. One thing that I would, that I don't want to wait until next week personally, is the, um, forward motion on the project by our consultants. I think that the residents and the council all would benefit from the opportunity to learn more, get on the same page without visits to, you know, their home, talking about furthering the project along on behalf of the council. I don't know that anybody on this council, save for maybe a couple, feels one hundred percent confident that this needs to go forward as presented, and so, um, anyone up there on our behalf talking about this moving forward, um, I think is, um, maybe a little bit premature, uh, at this point. So, I don't know, and I think, I, I hope this is in the spirit of your initial request, which is that, um, you know, I think that just out of respect for the situation, that the folks who are working on this project could take a pause for a week until we can convene and decide what we wanna do.
Could you clarify exactly which, what work you're talking about?
Well, so, there have been surveyors up going around to different people's property to do, um, assessments of their land, what trees might need to be cut down, and estimates on what we would pay them through either an eminent domain or easement process. Um, a lot of the residents up there, I don't wanna speak for them, but my impression is that they found this kind of intimidating or, um, just maybe heavy-handed, and, um, so I don't know where they are, I don't, you know, I'm not overseeing the project, so, so I can't say like, oh, well, we're on step, you know, forty-seven J. But, um, I, but I do think that in terms of communicating with residents on behalf of the city about where the project is headed, that that might be like a little bit premature. So I think that if those activities could cease until we as a body come to a conclusion about what, how we want this project to proceed or not, um, that that would be probably the most respectful of all parties involved.
Obviously, every attendee, um, council member or, or a member of the community, just generally, um, will have an opportunity to address the commission and, and make suggestions, not a Q and A at that point, same as here. But that may very well be something that needs to be brought forward to the airport commission, go ahead.
Well, that's what I'm requesting, right, cause we oversee the airport commission, airport operations, they're executing the process, um, in service of this grant on our behalf, and so I'm asking as a body if we, I'm making the request that we consider as a body, um, pausing the activities until we can hear from the airport commission, determine any next steps that we wanna take, um, at our next meeting. So this isn't like a resident suggesting like, hey, please back off, like I'm saying, as the overseeing agency, do we feel?
Sure. Sure.
Katie, could you clarify that, what are you exactly asking us to do?
To pause the project until our next meeting, to request that, that they cease operations on our behalf for one week.
So make, are you, like, make this a motion, or?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be a motion.
Can I?
Let, let me, let me go to Katie, go ahead.
Just a second.
Yes, please.
The, the question is, who did you intend that to be sent to, the committee? The engineering firm, the FAA? Who is it, I mean, there, nothing, nothing is happening, like, there's, there's no, there is no particular person doing anything on anybody's property site tomorrow.
Well, they, well, but people have been going and visiting these residents and.
And when are they doing it next?
Like, well, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, so can we, can we request that the airport commission and the engineering firm pause until they receive further direction?
The airport commission doesn't, doesn't do anything with regard to this project per se.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying, I mean, they did, we have, we have, the city has contracts with engineers to fulfill certain milestones at particular periods of time. Nothing, nothing happens significantly, I mean, no decisions made.
Well, I understand that.
Okay, so, so if, if for example, they already hired a surveyor last month to show up tomorrow to do work, which I don't think, I don't think anything has happened recently. I mean, when was the last time somebody told you that they showed up? I mean, that, that work was done like a month ago. So, if you're worried about somebody showing up and saying, I'm here as a surveyor, and here's the amount of money that we're gonna give you, anything like that occurred last month, nothing could have been done, done that, and then the last two weeks, not aware of it, certainly nothing's been happening through tomorrow, or today, and tomorrow, when the, when the, it's, it's amazing, engineer representatives are gonna be here, when you can, but I can't tell you what the engineering firm on our behalf has, has integrated or scheduled or planned.
Yeah, that's all sort of my point.
But that's something that you could ask them tomorrow.
Well, that's why I wanted to talk about it as a council, if you wanna do that. Because, um, I'm not talking about between today and tomorrow, I'm talking about between today and next week, is the next time we all get together.
You could, you could ask, you could ask the engineering firm if they're doing anything on site of any kind of, tomorrow, I don't think they are, but simply ask them.
Right.
Instead of us trying to say what we're gonna ask them to, when we don't know what they're doing even the next week, we just, we just ask them.
But if they say yes, and we don't have the opportunity to talk about whether or not we want them to proceed, so that's why I'm trying to have a.
Okay, and supposing, and supposing they already have, that they're in the process of a twelve thousand dollar project, and they have surveyors that can show up, and if they cancel it, we're gonna have to go out and do it again, the future maybe it's gonna cost us twelve thousand dollars.
And that's something we should consider.
That's, but, but.
But we don't have, we don't have the information.
Bringing out, you don't have enough information to make a rational determination as to whether that's necessary.
Well, I, I don't agree, only because I know that these people are, they're organizing, they're hiring attorneys, they're getting their own land surveyors, and I think that.
The people who live in town, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
But.
That's not gonna change, you mean, now the department either.
But we could give them a little bit of peace of mind that we have, we're taking into consideration the duress that we're putting them under based on this.
Nothing, no decisions will be made until you make them. You can tell them that you're not gonna vote for anything, for any condemnation, or for any, uh, anything they don't agree to, until such time as you're satisfied.
Let, let me go to Jenny, please.
I, I just wanted to ask this question, um, we executed the contract with the firm that, um, that voted on making people. So if the pause isn't that contract, I mean, you would have to, we would figure out how we're gonna pause the work, correct?
I mean, we have, we have the legal authority to pause their work. That's what I'm saying, but, but the practical way to do it would be, they're gonna be here, we have contracted, and we are paying based on, based on what we agreed to do, and this council agreed to do and voting for, you can ask them what their milestones are and what they're currently working on, and see if they can arrange it, but I don't, as I said, I think the things that you're concerned about based on what, what I understand, that's all that, that's, and, and, that, that's all preliminary work anyway, no decisions are made, no offers can be made, no signatures can be taken unless it's approved by the council.
Let me bring this back to the council, please, uh, Mike?
Um, come back to me.
Okay. So, your hands up, alright. Alright, so, go ahead.
Can I ask a legal question?
Yes, go ahead.
Cause I've heard.
No, you can.
I think maybe yes.
Yes, one, and that was it.
Okay, I asked it.
Go, go ask, ask your legal question.
Cause I've heard a lot about, like, what if we rescind this, can you walk me through it? If we decided we were gonna rescind this, what that looks like?
I don't know that you can do that.
Okay.
It depends, depends on, you can, you can choose to not approve future actions, but you, you signed a contract where you directed people to, these people to move forward, to do preliminary work, so the determinations could be made as to whether you're going to, to fund it, not fund it, make application for it, approve, move forward with the FAA, the FAA hasn't given you a dime, they haven't promised you a dime. What all, all that's happened is that this, this is all preliminary work. If you wanna breach the contract and say, don't do any more work, then we can talk to them about voluntary termination, but again, we signed a contract for a price for them to do work, we afforded it, um, they did not, uh, if we, if we choose to stop, then we can talk to them about it. We could ask and say, here's where we are, we would like to negotiate, and this way to wind it down, but they would have no legal, we would have, they, we would have no legal basis to terminate it, other than that we changed our mind, and there might be a mechanism for.
So the bottom line for me.
Ah, we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna pay you, go ahead, then you want lawsuit, chill, get lawsuits.
Before I, before I go to, before I go to anybody else, the, the bottom line for me is that we don't know. There are things that we don't know, right, and, and so I'm with you, Katie, I, I, I'm just absolutely empathetic. I understand where you're coming from with this, but we don't know where we are with the contracts, we don't know where we are with the expectations and the benchmarks and so forth and so on, that people have been hired to. It may be a moot point, because as David alluded to, tho- those things might have already taken place, and that we are waiting for a next series of benchmarks. I would suggest again, um, that tomorrow should be a day that provides answers to most of these questions, and, um, I also suspect that, um, this being reported, this will be viewed, and of course, when it's liaised on to the airport commission, that this will be imparted to folks in the airport commission, that these questions that have been raised now should be something that is brought up so that we have that information, and you can, we can make appropriate decisions within the context of our normal council meetings. Go ahead, Mike.
Katie, I understand your goal, but I think ultimately as a council, our goal is to, or should be to collect information so that we can make an informed decision while being mindful of hearing public input and, um, politicizing isn't quite the right word, but, but like, making the community aware that like this is, I mean, we don't, we, yes, we represent the City of Oniana, but we also need to be concerned about the residents of the town, um, and, you know, other people who live outside the city who are affected. who are affected by city actions, um, so I, I feel like the best way to do that is, yes, to get information tomorrow, to hear it, we don't feel like we don't have enough information to make any decision. I'd also be concerned that any act, if we took any action at this point, it would be, could be seen as a public as, uh, you know, just as politicizing it further, as, um, that like the council is like, I can, I can just see the Daily Star headline, council puts pause on airport, um, whatever, survey. Um, you know, so I just think we need to tread carefully, um, and like, I mean, those of us in this room know that we do a good job hearing public input, but the public doesn't always feel that. Um, so that I, I do think, you know, we just have to continue the process as it's moving forward, but also perhaps communicate to our constituents that we haven't made any decision. All we did, all we proved in April was some collecting of information essentially, so that we could make an informed decision.
Done.
I have a question about the, um, application for the FAA grant. Does the council get involved in saying, go ahead with that, or has that already happened? Where do things stand with the grant?
The council's always involved in, in any application, especially, um, given that most every application is going to wind up with a backend cost to the city, 10%, 5%, 15%, whatever it may be.
So we haven't, like, we haven't weighed in on that?
We have not.
Thank you.
Uh, Jenny, did?
I can go downstairs and verify, but I almost think we already did.
You think we already did?
But I can go downstairs and verify.
We improved the local match of $8,750 in April.
I would, I would say, I would say Jenny thinks we already did and Carrie's shaking her head, yes, that we can strike from the record, except generally speaking, but not this specific instance we apparently have already, um, the council.
Okay, so given, given that, go, if, if we go on the assumption that we've already given approval, I think.
Approve the application.
Approve the application, right. Is that something that could be?
That does approve the grant.
Right.
I understand, is that something?
There is no grant that's been awarded.
Can we ask them not to or to pause?
We, we always have the option of not accepting a grant, we have the option of changing our minds at any time, really, but, um, to Jenny's point, the application has been approved.
Yeah. Do you want me to run downstairs to confirm?
I think it's, it's a moot point.
No, I think, yeah, I think the mayor has answered my question, you had to, so it'll come before us again before, and any, right.
That's, that's correct, that's correct, yes. Uh, Scott, did you have something?
No, because Carrie actually gave me too, because I was looking for the motion. What does the motion say with the monetary thing?
So it's an entire resolution? You want it from the top?
Yes. It's going to be beautiful, it's going to be wise, please.
Or just, can you just pull it up on our individual screens?
Yeah, I could, once you approve that expenditure. We'll see if we can get a motion for that. Um, so, whereas the city of Oneonta's adopted Airport Capital Improvement Plan, A C I P, fiscal year twenty-five dash fiscal year twenty-nine, identifies the critical safety initiative required by the Federal Aviation Administration, F A A, regarding the runway zero-six dash two-four off airport obstruction clearing, and whereas the F A A requires completion of a multi-step process to remain eligible for Airport Improvement Program, A I P funds, with an initial easement acquisition phase including landowner engagement, surveys and appraisals, negotiation and offer and grant application, and, whereas the common council acknowledges the requirement to begin without delay to ensure remaining on schedule to seek F A A grant funding, and whereas the estimated cost for the initial phase of the project is $350,000, with the final local share being two-five, two-point-five percent for $8,750, and whereas the common council authorizes the funding of said project by a 153, 952,085 cents, advance from the airport reserve and $196,047.15 advanced from the Community Landscaping Fund, subject to future grant reimbursement whereby the Community Landscaping Fund will be made whole and the Airport Capital Improvement Reserve will be made whole lest the city's required local match. Therefore, be it resolved, the common council of the city of Oneonta authorizes a capital budget for said project not to exceed $350,000, and be it further resolved, that all necessary budgets, budget amendments and transfers for said local share are hereby authorized, and be it further resolved, the common council authorizes the city administrator to execute all necessary agreements on behalf of the city of Oneonta with its designated airport engineering consultant, Passaro Associates, in connection with the project, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
We have actually approved the application. Okay. I said very much correctly. So that said, I think we probably are at a place where I, certainly, as much as I appreciate where you're coming from, I, I don't know that there is a council motion that would pass to do anything. I think what we would want to do is to get all the facts, um, ask, you know, pertinent questions, um, express opinions, do what, you know, needs to be done in the context of the airport commission meeting, walk away with as much information as we can, and then the council will have a, an informed and robust discussion.
Carrie, when is our next meeting as a full council?
Uh, September?
Second.
September second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, um, nothing else for, no additional business or other things for council consideration? We do, um, have the need for executive session times two. Um, one, um, executive session on the advice of council relative to, uh, discussion agenda, item number nine, and another to discuss matters relating to confidential policies concerning the city's I T infrastructure where the public disclosure could compromise safety and security. And so do I have a motion to go into executive session? I've got Scott followed by Mike and Donna Kieran.
Councilmember Roger Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember LaPerry Shu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes, okay, so.
For, for, for request a, can we take a?
Sure.